I'd like to reconvene the village council annual retreat agenda. Just for those at PRG, they do have quorum. Just a note, it's undecided if we officially have quorum or not. So, we're not making any decisions because not everybody is here. We are missing Mary Scoot and Robert Epps. But, we're not making any decisions. We're more just here to listen, hear you guys out on what thing and anything we need to move into that will give price and direction of adding it to a future agenda. So, that's where that is. But, I would like to start out by saying a couple of accomplishments from you guys over the last year. Obviously, the huge success with the tree lighting. So, we appreciate all the efforts you guys put into that. Enjoyed being there. The planning on the roundabout, I know that you're probably getting a lot of phone calls for that and stuff. We're concerned what the lighting is going to look like there and stuff. But, with all the hardscapes and stuff, that's something that we appreciate your work on. Obviously, formulating the priorities on the trails and the greenways and trails. And, we're also near completion of the village hall trail and with nearly no financial impact, which is a great thing. So, and then the last thing I had was National Life Federation and becoming a, what do you call it?
Certified community.
Certified community. I mean, we're moving in the right direction on a lot of these things. So, again, I'll speak on behalf of the council that some that are here and aren't, that we appreciate what you guys do, your service and your level of commitment to the community because it's people like you that really make Marvin what it is and continue to be that way. So, thank you for that.
Christine, could you make your announcement about the planner too?
About the planner? Would you have officially a planner that's been hired who starts Monday? So, hopefully, he's fresh out of school. He's a civil engineer by trade. He went to Georgia Tech. So, he actually came today and listened to some of the meetings. So, we're really excited to have him. He's very eager and willing to learn and grow. So, we're excited to put him to good use.
Nice guy. Really nice.
Yes. His name is Rohit. And I'm not even going to try the last name for now.
I'd have tempted if you showed me it on a piece of paper. But, he said just call him Rohet.
Rohit.
Rohit?
Rohit.
Oh, R.O.H.I.T.
Not Rohit.
Oh, I have Rohet then.
Rohit.
Sorry, Rohit.
So, I don't need to officially call a meeting to order because we're not making the decision.
Yeah, but you guys have forms so they should, right?
You can. You can call when to order.
All right. I called the Parks Recreation, the Village of Marvin Parks Recreation and Greenway Board to order at 1:01. We do have a quorum with John and Bob and myself. Andy's supposed to be here any minute. Now, Vish could not make it. So, my primary goal today was to talk about our capital plan because I know you guys are getting into budget season and also Christina had asked us to put one together because obviously it's a new process for the village. There were just a couple of things I wanted to mention on the, we don't sure approve these probably at our next meeting. Derek still was working on his park list. For the record, Andy is here.
All right. Just got started, right on time.
Just to let you guys know, the tree removal is a must. That needs to be done next year. The lakeside corridor, our priority is the pavilion, which is the 25,000. We recognize that there are issues because of the village hall financing for next year. So, obviously, we would push that off another year if there's issues there. The roundabout hardscaping, again, I think we just threw some numbers out. We have no idea what that's going to be. And, the wayfinding signs, this is in '21, '22. We believe that that is high, but that's '21, '22. So, it's not a big deal right now.
And Mary, if you don't mind me interjecting real quick, there is a joint kind of accomplishment that's noted in your thing there with Union County Parks and Recreation. They've actually started a kind of a geographic wide wayfinding campaign. They're actually putting together a plan with us potentially contributing to that plan with Weddington. I can't remember if Waxall was at the table, but there were a few other municipalities. So, that's something that they're actually doing a plan. We would just be paying for the actual signs. So, a lot of it's going to be paid for, not by us.
I think we were told though that we would have input on the design of signs and things like that. So, it's not really just them making the decisions.
Yeah. Chris said there's actually, there was, I think, 20,000 aside for signs for...
In the general fund.
Yeah. When the village center was created, four signs. I think that's a bigger deal. Those signs are bigger and everything. But, anyway, that's just, I just mentioned that. It's into the future. But, oh, and the last thing I want to mention, the Tolomor parking lot in '23, '24, the 40,000, I believe, is to put, make it asphalt. The smaller expenses as of the next year is to put a concrete skirt. So, it's right now, you probably noticed on the church parking lot, the gravel gets pushed out onto their streets, which they don't like. So, he's getting a quote to figure out how much it would be just to put a concrete sort of apron, really technically before the parking lot begins. But, it would keep the gravel in there and then maybe whoever's blowing it, you know, how often they get there, they could blow the gravel back. But, it just keeps it out of the street because that has been a complaint. And we're thinking it's not going to be that much money, but he's still looking for estimates on that. But, I don't believe that we're supportive of doing an asphalt parking lot. But, that's way out into the future, '23, '24. But, you know, it's a possibility. Certainly something that they have wanted. But, my understanding is if you didn't do it in the beginning, you basically have to start over because you have to dig up all the gravel and everything. So, it could be very expensive. And I don't know if the 40,000 would cover it. So, those are just some comments.
Is it even kicking up any dust or anything? I mean, that would be my biggest concern about bringing gravel out onto the road and kicking up a lot of dust. I don't see it.
I was there.
I don't see a lot of cars.
Pretty frequently. I didn't see much gravel being, nothing like here at the church. I don't even know if the concrete apron will really solve it. If it's getting in people's tires and getting in the treads, it may not. But, if it's not a lot of money and it helps it some, I think it would waylay some of the complaints that we've heard.
And I can't remember, Mary, we met with the HOA president and it seems like she brought it up or...
She did bring it up too. I will say, when Christina and I met with HOA president, she was very understanding. I was going to talk about this on the greenway portion, but I'll just mention it now. She is very anxious to get Phase Two finished. And really, right now, the survey is done. It just has to be recorded. Someone has to sign the easement. We're not sure if that's the developer or the HOA. She said she would be happy to sign it. And really, we've been waiting for the planner to be hired to do that. So, hopefully, that's a high priority for him. And I think that that would make the HOA a lot happier. Also, Laura talked to the developer in March of last year about taking down the barbed wire and it still isn't done. So, staff is, in our last meeting, we asked staff to call them again and say, you need to do this because we would like it done before the trail is open. It's, I think it's dangerous. All right. So, well, like I said, I was going to talk about our greenways construction.
So, just so y'all know why she's passing this out, I've put the CIP plan together for all general fund projects, which is what she just mentioned. So, it's all in one pot, this next part that she's pulling around.
Actually, this is just some things I want to talk about.
Okay.
I think they already have a copy of the actual...
The greenway, okay.
Yeah. This is just some support, some things I want to talk about before I get into the CIP. But, one thing I wrote this up note and already forgot it. I forgot to put anything in for the master plan redo.
I've got it in there.
Oh, you do? Okay, good. Okay. So, the things I just gave you, the first page is just remind everybody in the last survey, sidewalks and greenways were the thing that half of the people on the survey said that they thought should be, you know, top priorities for the next five or 10 years. So, I do believe a new survey is going to say the same thing, but it's definitely something people want, I believe. It is expensive and that's why I'm just reminding you. The, and when Christina asked us to come up with the CIP, one of the issues that we had was trying to figure out what is the current cost for asphalt trails. Derek contacted the person, the company who did the loop and he said, oh, because of gas prices and oil prices, it's really, really gone up. So, the second page is talking about asphalt versus concrete. Mine's done something too. This is actually the master plan. And the pros and cons associated with each one. And I think if what he's saying is true, that it would be anywhere between $80 and $100 per linear foot for just a six-foot wide path. Our standard right now is eight-foot wide. I don't think we can afford it. So, I believe, and I'm going to go back at some other pages. In one place it says it's asphalt, but we have like at Marvin Courtyards, they use concrete. So, as you can see at the bottom, concrete is substantially less expensive than asphalt. And these are just numbers from 2008, just $80,000 for a six-foot wide. So, I'm just saying, and if you look at the pros and cons, I don't see that much of a difference. You get the, on the concrete, the last one, concrete joints could interrupt wheeled users. I don't, me even think that's an impediment because we wouldn't want like real bikers on it. It would be more casual bikers and things like that. And rollerbladers, you know, they should be fine.
And they're just talking about the expansion joints that you have with any concrete with the car paint, you know, things like...
Isn't that how normal sidewalk is?
Yeah. But, they can be made smoother if they're saw cut versus done when they're wet.
Yeah. So, I'm just mentioning it to say that when we get to the point, and I'm hoping that my new planner can help with this, because we are to the point where we're, you know, hopefully going to be making some tracks. We haven't done many trails, obviously, over the last years. And there are reasons like the village hall is postponed because of the roundabouts. Ennisbrook is waiting on the sewer line to be replaced. But, we really need to have someone that can get definitive costs, you know, what would the, what are the impediments, do we have easements and all that kind of stuff. But, I just believe that this is something, if it's true what he told me, we are also trying to get in touch with Belt Road because they did their section not too long ago, which is asphalt. And they actually have a bridge on it too. So, we're trying to get information from them, but they haven't called Derek back yet.
I would also, not just the costs, you know, to put them in, but there will be just some discrepancies in terms of the costs for ongoing maintenance. So, with asphalt, you know, a lot of times it's more just sealing and doing similar cracks where you might have to replace a whole section if it gets undermined. So, when we look at that cost, I just want to stress that we look at not just the implementation cost, but the ongoing maintenance because there could be some, you might make up on the back end. I just, we didn't have those numbers.
Generally, concrete is more durable though, set period time than asphalt, especially the heat and such.
Yeah. I remember us looking at it once before and there were, you know, life cycle decisions to make within that as well, you know, the whole durability, but just to make sure that we take all those factors into play.
And the next page is just, this is the only thing I could find that were missing about And as they say, multi-use paths on Section D. The other thing I think we're going to have to talk about is the width. You'll see at the end that it's, our current standard is either eight to 10 feet wide. But, when you're going in front of some of these homes that are very close to the road, you can't put in an eight-foot wide path, I don't think. So, I don't know if the ordinance has to be changed because this is, the ordinance for subdivisions. And it's the village who's putting these in. So, again, I'm just mentioning this to say it's something to think about. And then the next page, the last page from the guys, is just our, one of the pages from our new trail standards. This is actually kept on the master plan now. It's not part of the ordinances. So, we could change this. If we say it could be anywhere between six and 10 feet, we could say that without having the ordinance is changed.
One quick question. She mentioned that section is within the subdivision ordinance. So, that really would acquire, apply really only to new subdivisions.
Or unless there's, there's something that changes more than 51% and they have to adhere to the new standards. So, yes.
So, if we're building, I don't know if we have the same...
Yeah. I think, and that's a discussion I need to have and look into because we have some similar questions with village hall project that we're potentially phasing some things in and that sidewalk being a portion of that. And I need to see if we can exempt ourselves from certain standards and I'm pretty sure we can. I just, I need to look into that.
Mary, if I'm not mistaken, the Joe Carr Loop, it's six feet wide.
Well, I mentioned it on the different places. I think the majority of, I'd say, the place that, but at the end, I mean, it's actually only four feet because it's a sidewalk.
Yeah. And as I recall, big parts of the Joe Carr Loop may have even been developed prior to us at some point coming up with any of those standards. Again, I think that occurred in the other...
Okay. So, now that we look at the actual CIP, and that's the one that starts out Amber Meadows as we call it.
And this is...
Do you have one of these? Do you have one of these?
I got a bunch. This is, this is separate from what...
Sure.
This is separate from the one that we've already talked about. So, it's a separate pot of money, just so y'all know.
Wish you...
It starts with Amber Meadows. I have a bunch if you want another one.
So, speaking of that, obviously...
Do you have one, Jim?
Yeah.
If you look down at the bottom, what I just wanted to point out is as of today in January, we have almost $190,000 in reserves for greenway construction.
Where's that, where's that at?
Very far.
Very far. And if we do what we're proposing for next year and what we haven't yet done this year but we propose to do, we would be about $31,000 short. Okay. So, anyway, but I just wanted to point that out so that we do have those dollars identified and hopefully Christina won't take a crack.
So, just so y'all know, some of that, I think the one, one of them is in the capital project fund and then the other one's in reserve fund balance. I don't remember which is which, but...
Yeah. It's the bigger one is the one that's in the reserve. I talked to Christina and there's also really 46,000 that, these were dollars that were from maintenance that were being budgeted every year. I think it's up 14,000. And we were losing it. Basically, it is things like resurfacing the loop, you know, the big tree project we had where we, you know, cut down some trees, you could take out of it too. But, we were losing it every year because we weren't doing any of that maintenance. It has, it's been a long time since we've done anything. But, now desperately needs to be done because there's a lot of cracks and things. And Derek's still trying to get a good quote on that. So, we certainly don't think it's 46,000. We're hoping it's much, much lower. So, I know Christina has earmarked that to take anything, you know, once they get the good estimate on what it's going to cost to resurface it, because there will be dollars again budgeted this year for maintenance again. I don't know if it'll be 14,000, but, so there'll be money for regular routine maintenance. But, those funds may go away except for, I'm hoping, what the resurfacing will cost.
And when we say resurfacing, it's more just filling existing cracks and then potentially doing an overspray of the whole.
It's that right there?
Yeah. That's the thing that Christina mentioned this morning.
They're going to come in a crack seal, just like you see the crack seal there, and then they're going to overlay. You can pass those to them if they haven't seen them.
Or if they've seen them.
It's called Liquid Road?
Yeah. It's a sealing.
So, again, we have no idea.
But, it's not the whole layer of that.
No.
So, I had asked Derek the question, does the road need to be cleaned or the walkways need to be like power washed before they put it in?
The contractor will do it. I don't, I honestly have no clue.
So, that is like... The contractor will take care of the entire process.
All in the surface.
So, for next year's budget, all I'm trying to say is that there's 46,000 or about there. The trees, I think, were 3,000, so that may be 43 now. But, anyway, the big thing, which we have had living over our heads for a while, is the fixing of the loop cracks and so forth. But, we have those funds, I think, and then Christina will probably will take whatever's left for...
Where's the 46 that you're talking about?
It's not on this one.
Oh, okay.
I kept it separate because it was maintenance.
Yeah, that's part of me.
I have an email, I have an email.
I think mine's...
I didn't make copies of it from Christina. I mean, not Christina, Chris here.
The 46 is in the reserve right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So, all right. So, just, I just want, I'm not going to go through everything because I know we only have an hour, but I just want to mention a few things, mostly the current projects and the next year. Amber Meadows, as you know, was not built properly and I think there are ongoing negotiations. The builder was supposed to give us $11,000. This is assuming they get those dollars and there's still, according to staff, back and forth. So, this is assuming that they paid that. So, this is the amount we would have to pay.
So, it's basically 15,000. This is 11 plus four.
And this is rectifying a greenway path that they put in, but they put really chunky mulch that wasn't really appropriate.
That's, yeah. I think you went out there, right, Kim? You and Robert.
So, we just need to, Mary, we'll have to go in there and actually put in the exact amount because we've got to get it in and then get it out. So, I need to just clean that up a little bit.
If you look at the detail, I took it and put it as a separate negative amount. So, if you want to do that, if you look at the detail page, it's the negative.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, whatever she needs to do.
And we'll work, we'll work through this. Okay. We can, we can get it cleaned up.
Oh, and the bollards, they have, you know, you've done that. But, anyway, we, so that's the 40,000. Also, when we, when the preserve developer, I think it's told brothers, gets finished with village hall, there's about 150 feet is what Derek estimated that we'll have to connect, you know, where they stop in the village hall is. And then the next one is...
Is that from both sides?
No, it's that side.
Because there's nobody developing the other side.
Yeah. Yeah. They're, they're going to do the whole thing until it gets, they're, they just didn't know where village hall is actually going to be. So, they, they stopped it. I didn't know where exactly, but he said it's fine. So, that's not a lot of money. The next one on the list is Ennisbrook. And right now, we are waiting on, as I said, the planner to file the easement. We did find in our detail, when I actually printed out that map that I pieced together up there, I actually put in the individual properties and structures. There's, there's a property on either side of the Ennisbrook section. We knew the, the preserve side said absolutely no, you can't put a trail in it, wouldn't give us an easement. There's also another one on the other side that we don't have an easement for. So, we can't get them, that's another 375 feet that we can't build until we can get And I'll go ahead and mention it now. We don't really have a process for how we get easements or who does it or whatever. And we think that that's something, it's probably going to be specific to each section because every section has its own challenges. Some sections, it, almost the whole section may be covered by one HOA, you know, and that's an easy negotiation. But, you may have other sections where you've got 10 homes and how do you deal with that? And that's something we mentioned in our last meeting. Because you can't do anything, I mean, if we have big pieces, we can do just like Ennisbrook, we'll go ahead, probably go ahead and do that portion even if the homeowner says no that it's right in the middle, obviously, we couldn't. So, that is something we have talked about, maybe making some recommendations and it may look different depending upon which section you're talking about.
And just to put a note there, I think one of the overlying principles we've had is that as we look to the natural areas from the original 25 miles of trails to the ones that are becoming more and more clear that can happen, if they're within those areas that we think, you know, can or have a likely chance of happening, you don't want to not move forward with areas and things if just one property is holding it up because as we all know, properties change hands, things change over time. And the vision that we're trying to get to is much larger than just the next two to five years, but, you know, a larger vision for Marvin in 20, 30 years from now.
The next one is, as I mentioned, Phase Two of Tolomor. So, hopefully that will, will be done this year. The park trail is a new one. You know, now we have a new standard, which is basically what, I think all of you have been on the Tolomor Trail. It's concrete mixed in with limestone.
Totally. Well...
Yeah, very well. And we, we do have a lot of issues with the park trail right now in that it's muddy, it's, you can't put a stroller on it.
Are any of the areas in a flooding? Or that we don't have a bridge? That we don't have a bridge? So, it gets flooded out kind of like over by Trader Joe's?
The back section where we put those culverts in, I would say, that back section where we did put some culverts in.
There's those, there's those natural drain source that goes to the pond on the back side and it's just been culverted and...
Kind of back from the maintenance shed.
It's not into the severity when we have all these rains that like Trader Joe's when you go into, you're underwater, you can't even use it. I mean, notice we don't have to close it.
No, it's mucky.
It's mucky. But, it is built up and has had a lot of work done to it on that section. And then we have the boardwalk down on the lower section, which keeps it in no good shape.
So, our new standard is also with four feet wide. That's what they say in actual trial normally. We would still keep the area that's now there clear.
So, let me ask you this, with your new standard that you put in place and we're looking to go towards, do you see you guys suggesting that we go back and redo the existing trails to get them up to standards or move forward first with...
This is actually the only trail we would have to upgrade to get to our new standards.
Okay. Good.
We, we do believe it would improve the enjoyment of our citizens for this because it would allow casual biking. That was the reason why they didn't allow bikes in the park before. And strollers. And I think the muddiness would be eliminated too. The park staff won't have to re-mulch the whole thing every year. So, and the other secondary part of this is we could use the fee and loo dollars from the courtyards because we measured it. And I, we looked up the definition of how you can use fee and loo money and I can pass that around if you guys want to see it. But, basically, it just says it needs to be within, it needs to be, serve the needs of the residents of subdivision and residents within close proximity of subdivision. And the courtyards is a mile and a half away from the park. And staff has agreed that that's within, you know, reasonable distance.
Chances of us giving a challenge over that are real anyways, but that's, I think.
Wasn't that the loo from the courtyards for the progress road?
Well, 29,000 of it, it was actually 76,000. And 29,000 has been allocated, which is in here for the widening, the sidewalks. And then there's about 5,000 left after we do this and I apply it to another project. You'll see at the bottom, I applied all $143,000 for fee and loo money to different projects. And it's the guideline, we, following the guidelines, that's saying it has to be within that...
Refresh my memory, what do we do with... Can I refresh my memory, what do we do with widening, we agree to sidewalks only on one side? And they pick the side?
I think that we made a suggestion, I don't know if that, if they ever came back to us, but...
We talked about sidewalks, but not the broader ones, and we were saying that we would need it on one side, not both sides, and we would leave that, to some degree, up to their decision of where we would...
And to include a bike lane?
I think it ought, I think they're automatically...
I don't know about that. In fact, the four-foot sidewalk was the base that was included in what they were gonna do anyway, without any input from the builders.
I go back to my notes on that, but I...
The amounts that they were looking for us to pay above, beyond that, if we wanted it larger, were pretty astronomical.
That, that number's pretty safe, no inflation, no surprises.
Oh, the twenty-nine thousand? So, anyway, so it would be funded by the fee-in-lose, so that's our recommendation. And I, I know we're not making any decisions today, I'm just saying that that's how we'd be covered.
Just, just a, just a question, a four-foot, four-foot trail, that's considered sufficient for a multipurpose trail, like, where people could have strollers, or bicycles, or, or chargers coming by you?
Yeah, I mean, based upon, for natural trails, based upon what the national parks use and everything, it's four feet wide.
And our current ones are larger than four feet wide? I'm just saying, you know, if you have... It would be this upgraded part of it.
Yeah, it, I guess it would go down the center of it, and then you'd have still areas on either side, but they would keep clean, the park and staff would. And if you wanted to widen it, I guess you could, but that, that's what the national parks do too, and that's sort of what we do.
It feels like curious to be allowing bikes, and then now, you know, bicyclists, and you got people with a stroller, you know?
We would, we're recommending it would be casual walking, like, children and things like that, but, I mean, could be adults too, but they're not gonna be speeding around.
Not mountain bike.
Yeah, and we did talk to Blue Ridge Trails, and they said that that is, that their trails can hold up to, you know, biking like that. Okay, the next one is Joe Kerr. Just to update you guys, I found out a couple of different things, but I did my little map. Almost half of that section was actually Marvin Creek, unfinished Marvin Creek, and the other half is Alyssia and Fields, but Alyssia and Fields was, when they were approved, when their subdivision plan, or whatever, was approved, it was before we came up with these, the loop and everything, and so I have the minutes where they were exempted from having to build a trail. They do have to grade it, but they don't have to build a trail, so we will have to do that. The reason it's next on our list is because we don't have any other trails where we have easements in place for everything else, and even though we don't have approval yet from Marvin Estates to walk on their roads, we feel like we still need to go ahead with it to keep moving forward.
Did you ever learn why, because they, they, they're not unhooked, do those roses that they can...
Well, it, I can, I can read it too.
Because that was before my time.
Yeah, this was two, from two thousand fourteen, when they, they were exempted, but it says, the ordinance was put in place in two thousand seven, which was after the original plans were approved by the applicant, so.
Okay.
There's an easement for the loop, but it's not, he's not responsible for doing the actual paving of it.
When you say Marvin Estates, is that Pacer and...
Pacer and Saddle were involved in this.
Those are all private...
Correct, and that's why, you know, we were, we were hoping that they would say, oh, you know, people would just be able to get to the end of the greenway, and it would essentially end it, saddle or Pacer, and then people could just walk that way, because anything we would do going further out Joe Kerr and out onto Marvin Road, probably state DOT main regulations, which dramatically increases the prices of anything you do, and there's also more safety issues out there, you know, with people walking right along a dangerous, dangerous area.
Does anyone figure out why they put that gate that they put in at the end of Saddle? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Private property.
It's, it's a gate that just does not allow a vehicle, and I could still probably get a golf cart around it, but you could round it, but it's, it's an actual gate, it can be open, it's, it's...
It's, it's a private room, so it's probably, that's an individual homeowner.
I believe that they own to the middle of the road, that, that property.
I don't know about that in particular, but yeah.
I think they actually, they actually, homeowner actually owns to the mid, middle of the road, and he...
So there must have been a shared cost, and they just decided they didn't want...
Either that, or one party said, you know, let's do it, and come up with a...
What did it stop? What was the issue?
I have no clue.
I'm just curious. Because that was a, I mean, if you're running or walking, that's an easy entrance into Marvin Creek.
More of a concrete, yeah, just about a three and a half mile loop you can do, do all that, it's a great one.
So, we haven't rocked it totally, but I personally would like to go back to Marvin Estates, they don't have an HOA, but all we're asking for is people to be able to walk on the streets, it's not like cars. Cars today, since it's not gated, can drive through there, so anyway.
Will it be marked?
If somebody's walking down the street, is somebody gonna come outside and say, hey, do you live here?
Exactly.
I mean...
They have that right, since it's a private road.
Why not, what are they gonna do then?
Well, they can call, well, they can call the police and...
Well, by that point, you're off their property, you're out of, in front of their house. I can't imagine anybody's gonna do that.
I mean, I think more than anything, we wouldn't wanna be seen as advertising.
Right, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying, what are they gonna do, come out and yell at me?
Legally, they can, if they do call and make a report, and you're seen on the property again, then they can actually come and find you, arrest you for trespassing.
Just, just to let you know.
So that's just the, the legal part of it.
I think it's busy enough.
But just to let you know.
That's the way to be neighborly.
Yeah, exactly.
Encourage, you know, connectivity and all that.
We, we initially had Melanie ask Robert F. to pick up if they would allow it, and he said no. I believe it's worth it after the basket and individual homeowners do, and that, so I'm not willing to drop it, because I think it's important enough, because if you do have to go to the end of Joe Kerr and go down Marvin Road, that's so dangerous and so unpleasant, we would probably have to cross the way, and probably get fire thrown to agree to let us put a trail in front of theirs, because otherwise, you're on Marvin Estates again, so.
There's not much room over there on the other side.
And it would be in the state DOT maintained right of way, which brings in a lot of requirements.
So, again, over the years, you know, I think we just have to look at it, that this is, this was the plan, everybody agreed to, and we will do sections as we can, and there will be things we'll have to figure out.
And we're sure that the place between Innisbrook and where that property ends, which is the backside of Marvin Estates, down that telephone pole line, there's no easement there. It's gotta be an easement. Yeah, there is. There's a telephone pole.
They, they, they backed up, the properties backed up to each other, Derek and I looked.
Right, but I'm just saying, there's gotta be an easement there, because of the telephone.
There, there may be an easement where the telephone pole is, but like, those properties...
Usually, there's a certain width of...
There's not.
Property that goes with the telephone.
Yeah, most times easements are easements for a specific purpose.
And it's gonna be like the...
I think that's...
It's gonna be like the power lines, it's the same thing, where they have an easement to put their stuff and maintain it, but beyond that, there is no, they have to give an easement to somebody else to do it as well.
I mean, Derek's looked at it.
You said you spoke to Robert, was that for his own personal property?
No, Melanie emailed him, just to get his opinion on what he thought, and this was years ago.
I talked to one homeowner there that was not interested in having anyone in it, I mean, it's kinda like with Innisbrook, they're all up, they were all up in arms, didn't want anything, I'm like, there's really not that many people, even once it gets completed, I don't see many people using it where it's gonna be like a, I mean, you may see one or two people walking by with a dog or a stroller, and it's like they're, they're making such a big issue of...
But, you know, for the time being, if people wanna walk down to Pacer and turn around and go back, then that's their priority. Also, chimney, Marvin Creek has some back sidewalks that apparently are private for them, but, you know, there, there are things out there that we can look at, but we believe that we need to go ahead and build this, and then we'll, we'll see how we're gonna connect that last piece. We, we, I'm just saying that these are the, this is the only project we can actually do next year, other than Innisbrook, and I believe that we just keep chipping away.
Innisbrook is still slated for outside defense?
Yes.
Just doing a time check, Mary, about twenty minutes.
I know, I'm trying, I'm trying. Okay, so, the next one is down Waxom Marvin Road, this would be, you know, starting at the roundabout and going down to Broadmore, we put that out in twenty twenty-one. We obviously have to get easements from all those property owners, that's why we put it out into that future year. It would be on the west side, not the Providence Hall side, and we also will have to have some way to cross, what's Village Hall is built, we'll have to have some sort of crosswalk across New Tinsley Road. The preserve, we are assuming the developer is gonna do this, this is the internal greenway that was discovered years ago. Mary Scott, in our meeting before last, said that she found documentation saying that it was their responsibility, and I know Christina's asked for it a couple of times, and she...
I just talked to her about it a couple days ago, and she's gonna try to gather it, so hopefully I'll get it soon.
No, no, we should have water.
It's in the fridge.
The refrigerator.
Okay. Oh, and I think over G, Broadmore is doing Section G, so that would be the developer as well. Broadmore to Henry Nesbit, as Andy will know, there's lots of homeowners on that section, so we put that out into the past twenty twenty-three.
On both sides of the road.
Yeah.
So that any of the homeowners in Set Shield own to the road on that side, even though that their way's set bad, there's privacy fence there, they own to Waxom Marvin Road on that side.
Are you guys... You're not something, right? You are also.
We are, yes, and I, I think even Set Shield is because it was built before, there's no sewer.
Big homes are something.
There's water, but no sewer along West Old Marvin Road.
So, I'm just trying to think, 'cause I, as, someone had said something, boy, if you could get sewer line down that road somehow, that may open the door to allowing them to be a little more open about easements.
We've only had county water since, for just over ten years, they put it in just before I bought my house, and it's in my front yard, on that side.
All right, and so the next section is Section I, and this is Crane Road, and then on Marvin Waxom Road, it would be from Henry Nesbit to Crane Road, and the way we did that, we, we assume it's gonna be a whole lot easier to get the school, because they own pretty much the whole property from, from Waxom Marvin Road up to the school on Crane Road, and just for their children's safety and so forth, we don't think an easement's gonna be a problem there, and it's, you know, open and everything, so that's the amount that's put in twenty-one, twenty-two, and some survey dollars. The harder piece is gonna be in front of the chimneys, and there's, we already have an easement around the back of the property that loops around, and that is P down below. To do the front, or to connect those pieces, either go around the back of the chimneys, where we have the easement currently for a natural trail, or you go along the front, and I personally believe that they're gonna have an issue with us asking for an easement along the front, if we never did anything with the easement around the back, and it's very, very expensive, it's two hundred and eighty-six thousand for that section versus doing it around the back, which is a natural trail, even with a bridge, it would be a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
So these would be, we would do both?
Correct.
We would do it, okay. So we, I'm sorry, is it the, is it the two eighty-five?
Up at the school and across the street.
Is it the two eighty-five that we wouldn't do versus the one thirty-three?
So, right now, here's Broadmore, here's Henry Nesbit, so here's Sandy Ridge, I didn't get all the chimneys, but basically, it goes down like this, you see the pink dotted line, and it comes out right in front of Cedar Hill, Cedar Hill Farms, and John said that they've been supportive of that, so there's a little piece here, but at Henry Nesbit, we would basically go around the bottom.
And that's a lot cheaper.
A lot cheaper than this.
And a lot prettier walk.
Yeah, and, and, you know, honestly, I mean, we could answer chimneys, but why aren't they gonna give us this if we didn't use this? And to me, this would be a lot more pleasant.
They probably all want this too.
Yeah, and this is ten thousand feet versus forty-two hundred, so it's a much longer trail, even though it's a lot cheaper, because it's natural again, so we would recommend this, even with the bridge and all the issues that were there before, it's still gonna be a whole lot cheaper, and I believe more enjoyable than having this here. You cannot do it across, because some of these houses are very, very close to the road, and I just don't think they're...
One thing, one thing that we would say to that too also, is that the chimneys, Pulte actually, still continues to own a three-acre lot just on the other side of Henry Nesbit by the power lines. Yeah, Christina had previously been pretty far down in conversations for Zini.
Right, I remember that.
With, with them donating that to us, and then that all kinda died down.
It's, it's a long Henry Nesbit.
But that would be a...
It's a long Henry Nesbit on that side of the power line, so it goes to the state line, which is where...
Where the guy sells the watermelon. Exactly, right there, but, but, you know, we would just like counsel to keep in mind, if they have any dealings with Pulte otherwise, or other things, that to bring that back on the table, that would be a great parking spot, or some other area right there.
Little pocket park with some parking or something.
Trailhead parking and all that stuff. Connectivity, because it's a, because if we even try to get the power line at some point, it's a natural crossing there, and to that Tolomor area, and to the chimneys trail, all of it right there.
Andy missed our last meeting, we talked about that. This is the power lines, there, there was some talk about connecting here to, we're, we're definitely doing this, going along here, and then up Crane Road, we're behind it, and then up Crane Road, so it's a bit of a duplication, but there was also some horse people interest and so forth, but if you look at this, once we put the homeowners on here, I don't think there's any way that they're gonna allow us to put a trail, you can see that they're right through this Woodhall subdivision.
Yeah, especially Woodhall, you'd have to figure out some other way to get around there.
That lot is vacant there on that power line, they can't build under it, so they can't really do much with it.
No, that's just right at Crane Road, but when you get deeper into Woodhall, you'll see that there's developed properties that...
You can see houses are right next to it too.
Yeah, it looks like it affects about twelve properties, maybe a little bit more.
And again, if we...
Oh yeah, definitely more, yeah.
If we have this, and then we can go up Crane Road, this part, we do think we need to do connected to Providence, right, along the power lines.
There's a lot fewer homeowners involved.
And the houses, you can see, are further away too, and even in this Providence Ridge Willa Creek, they split it, so the power lines, you know, are, are well away from the homes, which makes sense, but anyway, so we dropped that section, Andy missed our last meeting when we were talking about, we just don't think that that's viable along, and we already have Crane Road.
And it's not that we necessarily dropped it, we de-prioritized it, because it's quite good.
I think you're right, the easier path is around here, and the more enjoyable path is around, supposedly cheaper.
I would like, I would like to be bullet annex Marvin, chimneys of Marvin.
We get the chimneys to come in, not base.
Because it's basically the...
The other thing, I, I mean...
By the way, they wanna be Marvin.
Yeah, well...
Chimneys do? Why are we not bringing them in?
I think because in the past, when you look at how you have to do statutory annexations, if you allow a lot of voluntary ones, it can really crimp you, I think in another year or two, Marvin actually gets that ability to do statutory annexations back, and once you go to a statutory annexation, there are density requirements, all sorts of things, and you might necessarily need those homes and people that wanna come in to be able to get the larger piece and, and take away a lot of the doughnut holes. So I think it's more a sense of being strategic of how you look at the annexations versus...
I'm not sure I understand what that... I'm not sure I understand what that-
And that's definitely supposing that the legislature doesn't extend it and say, well, we said 10 years, and now we're going to keep it.
Yeah, well, I, I don't even know that it's much on the radar, you know, other than expiring.
Till we do it again, that would be, oh, correct.
And truthfully, if they did that, it would be, it'd be to the detriment of development of most of the municipalities, of the state, so I don't, I don't see them doing that unless there's a real good reason.
So, to move on, because I have to clean this up.
Just the other part of the issue I had with that trail. I mean, first of all, it's not a Marvin, so I probably should have issued that. I know my daughter, in a previous home, lived in Legacy Park, which was right on the, the trail was maybe 20 feet off her, from her property line. And the only people I ever saw on it were the horse, you know, the horses, but it was coming from the, I guess, the horse stable or down at the end.
Cedar Falls.
Cedar Hill, Cedar Farm.
So to me, it was like, when the horses were on there, you couldn't walk down the trail, because they had like 15 people on horses coming through. And to me, that was like a private business using our trail for their own, their own thing. I think that sort of didn't, you know, rub me a little bit, that, you know, if you wanted to be out there with your kids walking around or something, and now they come here with 15 horses and it's a private, you know, you know, it's not a, you know, you're priving the public of staying for private companies making money by doing your horse things.
The thing I wanted to point out was that it would be a lot less money. I think it would be a lot more pleasant. So I think with those kinds of issues, we'd have to talk to Cedar Creek and Cedar Hill Farms, and because part of the input is the, and just either designate, you know, a side portion or something, like we don't really want them on that honest day.
Yeah, I'm saying, that's the thing with multipropes trail, when it originally, and when Ray Williams, you know, originally came up, where it was going to be, you know, wide enough for horses to be here, and bicycles here, and they would spook each other and all this kind of-
Well, I don't know that it would ever be a trail that brings itself to bicycles.
Yeah, I'm saying, that was originally-
Or even strollers.
When Ray Williams talked about it.
Because it is pretty, if you get back there, it's-
I'm saying, but the original, the original theory that Ray Williams had put forward was it was going to be a multipropes trail, that you'd have enough room for the horses and people to walk and, and spook each other.
So this is pretty far out into the future, too, but I just wanted to point that out. We had discussed that quite a bit, and we wanted to make sure that that was clear, that we put both of them in there, but we, that would be our recommendation. The rest of these, I'm not really going to talk about, because they're so far out into the future. And I will talk to the PRD about the travel funds that may be available to us in 2026 later on. But I think that's it, yes. So did you guys have any questions from us?
I do want to point one thing out, though. So at the very bottom of her chart, as you look at next year, she's, if all of those projects are approved, she's basically asking for $245,000?
$209.
Yeah, well, I think-
With the fee and loot, yeah. So, yeah, I was getting to that. So coming down to what we initially said she added, had added, making up more change.
Yeah, what I did, what I did at the very bottom is I added the 2, the 16, 4, and the 204 to get up to the 220, so-
She's asking for $30,000.
From almost $31,000, is what I'm asking for.
You see the 30 that she's asking for? So that would basically mean 30 from fund balance or-
For next year.
And that's assuming that the Innesbrook, $77,000-
That's right.
-is done.
Yes.
Next year, we have no idea when the sewer stall is going to be done. So that's making that assumption, so.
Yes, but I just wanted to point that out, so y'all-
How quick Union County moves on things. Love you guys, Union County, if you're listening. But I, I mean, I can't imagine that that's done in the next, you know, year, but that's-
We don't want to lose our reserve dollars.
No kidding. Don't, don't lose, don't lose, we will not take your money, Mary.
That's easier enough. She's paranoid now.
I know. I'm taking your money. And I mean, and again, that's assuming that we can get, because I mean, I must, I mean, I think when we talked about it in our meeting on Tuesday, was that we don't have all of the easements for the Joe Carr Marvin Creek section to hook into Elysian Fields. Is that right?
No, the Marvin Creek, we, Chris was going to look into it. We assume when they got the easement, they got it for the entire thing, and they just, they, for some reason, they put it out at the end.
Okay, but we don't know that for sure.
We don't know. I'm, I'm almost certain of that, so.
That the easement should be there.
Should be, we just need to-
At the time, because it's going everywhere.
Gotcha. And then that, that section is only taking it up to Pacer, right?
Correct. So basically, this also gives us-
It may actually even be somewhat short of Pacer if there is a Marvin Estates property.
No, Roberts, I checked, and Roberts owns all the way over to Pacer.
Too big.
And for Elysian Fields.
No, it's actually, Elysian is, it's a weird, if you look at it, you'll see it's weird, and then there's this small, thin little, and then it comes up like the top.
So is that meaning that that's Roberts' personal property? So he may have one.
Well, I think it's-
Yeah, that could be different than a Elysian field.
This is LLC, it's an LLC. But when I looked at the flat, the loop easement goes all the way down here.
Oh, the loop easement does, for what he was approved by his staff.
This is Elysian Fields here with the tunnel entrance, and then this is another-
And then that's probably the gully, like right in there, like where that little creek is, right, probably right in there.
And those little gullies and stuff are the things that can be expensive, especially in state D O T.
Okay. So, we want to do this is because we need to get some planner or somebody working on this and to say, how much is the bridge going to cost? Give us a real dollar. And then, but we don't want them to waste their time on this, if you guys aren't in agreement.
Were we talking about anything in general? Or just right now, because we're wrapping up theirs, right?
Yes.
My next question was the events. Have you guys looked at that or thought about adding anything new or, I mean?
We talked about a fall event, but staff is pretty sort of swamped with everything. I didn't want to bring it up again. We had a lot of ideas, you know, the wine and cheese, the mom day, Marvin day, you know, all these kinds of things, but-
Say mom day?
Mom, like the moms? Kimmy and them?
Chrisanthemums.
Oh, mums.
Not dad.
I'm not even out here.
Because they bloom in the fall.
I'm very sensitive about that.
Chrisanthemum day and mom day. That day.
We have been, we have been very sensitive to staff's workload, and so we have not brought it up again. We haven't really tried to get a committee together either, but again, hopefully with the planner now and bringing up some time, hopefully, we can get more than-
Do you see any more funds needed for that kind of stuff, or, you know, if we did that and about how much, I mean?
It would depend on, on the event, but nothing we would do would be very much money. Because when we, when we were talking about it, we, I think we had $4,000 to spend, you know, that was left in the budget when this all came up. And we were, we were looking at things for, about that.
And refresh my memory, do we have an ordinance that say we can't have alcohol at the park at any time, any event, or?
And that stuff was-
Get temporary use. I think you can get temporary use permits.
Yeah, I think you would have to get a temporary-
Because I really like the idea of a wine and cheese party, chili cook-off was another thing that was suggested. Believe it or not, John, there's a lot of people of classic cars that, you know, would love to, you know, started with Marvin. I know there's a big thing that they put on at the high school every year. It's usually in the fall. That's a good time to do it and stuff, but-
Well, that was one of the things that we talked about, is we really need to sort of figure out what events are happening in the fall, because it's a very popular time.
Sure.
And we, we don't want to go to a lot of effort to create an event and then not have people, because they're going to Waxom-
Different directions from you, yeah.
But, you know-
I can eat chili in the spring, too. I drink wine in the spring, it doesn't matter.
You just got to make everything better than-
You could do a cruise in the fall, that would be neat. A cruise in?
Picky on time of year.
Like own cars?
Going, going back years, big years ago, right?
Yeah.
Two or three events we had were chili cook-off, and the mayor's, which, I mean, mayor, we drove 600 people.
But we, I think we got over 1,200.
Yeah, I'm sure, we, you know, at the mayor's, which-
There's a Ferrari club in, in the area, too, and I'm not there yet. But they are, they're around, and actually, some of our residents that are in Sedgefield are owners and part of that. There's one guy in there, I was like six.
The other thing, when we were looking at fall, was because-
It's asked us all, is council to drive each car.
Initially, when we talked about this, it was because we didn't have the dollars left in the budget. That's why we were targeting fall, was because of that, to spend those dollars. But there's nothing to say that we couldn't, couldn't just move it to the spring as well. But we had talked a lot about trying to find out what the events were, so we wouldn't be competing in maybe, that spring is a better time to do it. But realistically, with everything that's going on, we just felt like it wasn't a priority.
And smash-up job again on the, I mean, if you guys weren't there, the snow, the ice carving, it was just really, really nice.
And I would give all the complete credit to the staff.
It was, it was a joint effort. Everybody did a great job.
Unfortunately, a lot of the people who do show up for it are not necessarily Marvin residents, are coming to see their kids dance and, you know, a lot of that and stuff. But it makes it part of community and stuff like that, that we're doing that. So I just, I think we shouldn't get away from that, to keep Marvin Marvin and stuff.
Well, and we talk about annexation, too, whether voluntary, statutory, all those type of things, continue to help kind of build Marvin up as, well, what would the reason want to be that you're in Marvin? What do you get from it? Those type of events, or, you know, the, the ability to have a public park there, especially for, you know, neighborhoods that don't have clugouts and things like that.
Speaking of that, are we concerned at all by, as that development finishes up, that's across the street from the park, and how much?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the next thing I see is them putting some sort of pathway that they can, all the residents there can easily cross over into that, and I know we don't have the-
Just bypasses.
Well, yeah, bypasses, but, you know, walking in-
You can't, you can't control that.
It's, it's hard to manage.
So passes is for vehicular-
So they get a free park. Now, that, that neighborhood, I think now, based on what I'm seeing, would fall into Marvin sphere of influence and all the park is, and also the ordinance. I think it meets, I think there are almost one acre lots in there.
Yeah, that's why I think, you know, when the time does come, that the council is able to look at statutory, I, I think that's the reason why you don't take in voluntary, because there are a lot of stringent requirements to complete a statutory one, and you do one that's thoughtful, well communicated to the, to the community, and you bring people along that way. The other way to do it is, is, you know, via, you could have, you could vote it, you know, and that would be another way. You can do an annexation via a public vote that would include both the people that are within the community, as well as the people that would be affected. I know that used to be in the annexation.
Okay.
You have to have a certain number of participation, the interest level.
Correct.
Yeah.
There, yeah, there's no way to keep people from walking in.
Oh, I know, that's, I mean, and they won't need to, if they have a bike or whatever. It's, it's a park that you know they're going to take it, whether they plan for it in their own community or not, you know we're going to see it over there. It's just a matter of if the cars go over there or not, if Derek is around to manage that.
So who would you do it to? The motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the training of the Village Marvin Parks Recreation and Recreation Committee with the Village Council at 2:02.
All of that, good job, you guys. Thank you very much.
Kept it within an hour, Ross.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a great weekend.
We're doing good. We're not going to have to come Saturday.
Go, let's go. Christina, go.
Do you want to-
Christina, go.
Kim, I know you had added this village handbook on here. Do you want to talk about that when we have the entire board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Put it on the work session.
Put it on the technical work session.
Please, please, please.
Please what?
Not talking to you.
So, I had, Kim had asked me a little while back to add this village handbook.
Is that what you said to me earlier?
Yeah. Just like my wife. Second wife.
We're just going to take that off, since the entire board's not here.
Well, I, what, the?
Uh, D.
Handbook, okay. I was thinking the other ones, too, because discussion capital project, reserve amendment for Village Hall project?
Well, let's talk about it and see what you have to say then.
Yeah, I can talk real briefly about it. Couple of things, I wish Robert was here, because he, he knows a lot about this that I really need to talk with him about. Okay, just wanted to mention real quick how I was going to get the funds for Village Hall. And I, I made several copies, so just-
Borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, right?
You're a magician.
Pull it out of your magic hat with your bunny rabbit and your little magic wand.
It's all smoke and mirrors.
So if you look at the sheet that says, the kind of vague sheet, this one right here?
Yep.
Estimated cost, and again, these are just numbers that I'm, I'm guessing. I don't have actual quotes or anything. 1.5 is what I feel like is a safe number, I could be wrong. We have 1.6, I'm sorry, 8.69 in the capital project budget now, so we take that out. I need a total of $630,000 to make up the difference.
Okay.
I've got the land acquisition of 364. Take that out, and then take away 265 from fund balance, gives me that total.
Was our, is fund balance at 149, 1449?
No, it's five some.
That, you're talking about unassigned?
Unassigned.
So the, the unassigned was like 500,000-ish.
Oh.
You should flip the page.
My acquisition has the total.
Should you put it over here?
Yep. Yeah, flip over the page where-
So this is just to do it in cash?
Yes.
Which, we have to do it in cash, correct?
No, not necessarily.
We don't have to, I mean, we could go through the, the local government commission.
I thought we had to, for the first year.
Well, I don't know that they would deny it. I don't know that for sure.
We're pretty, we're in a pretty good financial position.
I'm just-
We have no doubt, and we have a whole parcel of land that's a park that we could use as collateral.
But-
We're, we're in a very good financial position. I don't know what they would look at about not approving your budget at one time, so.
I understand.
I don't, I mean, it could, it could not even impact us. I don't know until I ask them, so.
It's, it's much easier to build it and then refi it.
That's right, yes.
Well, that's where I was going. It's like, we get it, we have enough to go, and then we just refi.
So then, if you look at the back sheet, it tells you what the effect of fund balance is, and so it kind of breaks down where we would take the money and where everything would be left. But at the end of the day, go down to the bottom, and it talks about, from the audit here, before, after, so the effect of fund balance, you would have-
It'd still be at 79%.
Of total fund balance, you would be at 26% of unassigned, which basically, unassigned[1640.62] Which basically, unassigned is, it's there for spending, cash money, whatever you want to spend. Which is still plenty of money, I mean, it's still plenty of funds for, it's, I don't, don't put me on the number of months, but it's over two months. Yes. So-
Over two months of what?
Operating expenditures. It's over, it's definitely well over two months. We would have, let's see, 500 minus, what is it?
Is there, is there a minimum we're required by the LGC that we're taking?
8%.
Are there municipalities out there that are at 8%?
They don't actually, they don't have a drop dead minimum, they just start sending you nasty letters at 8%. I mean, you could be at 2% and they'll come in and start looking at your finances, and they don't like that. And I would never recommend that. But 8% is kind of the minimum.
Well, I'm not saying we do that, I'm just-
But this is, this, we could do this and then turn around and get financing on the backend and pay ourselves back to get the money back. Or get some of the money back, we don't have to get all of it.
Well, and that's a, that's a good point, you don't have to refi the whole.
Yeah.
Why, now, I wouldn't refi until there was a project identified. Why, why, I mean, you know what I mean?
Well, because it takes time and, I mean-
It gives you some breathing room, I get that, but then-
And that's why you don't do all of it.
But your total fund balance after you did that would be 79%, which is good. But when we're looking at cash dollars, actual money that we can spend, you're at 26%, which is still good. So either way we look at it, it's fine, at least temporarily, short term.
I mean, 1.5 is just getting crazy.
Oh, we haven't even seen numbers yet. You wait till you see the bits.
I know, this is why-
Wait till you see the bits.
This is why the house on the corner would have been better. It's 900,000 and 200,000 and upgrades. I know it would have been, but.
You pass that out, that's the timeline that, this is the timeline that Mary had done a few months back. I've actually made a bunch of comments on it, so it's-
I don't, I mean, I don't disagree with planning board was saying about, you know, this amount.
So I just wanted to give that, pass that out because we're, the architect just emailed me back last week, which is the email that I had passed out about changing our detail sheets. So we're already past a lot of these deadlines in here, so I just wanted to let you know that, I mean, this deadline, these, the schedule is-
He is to have meetings.
The schedule is going to have to be pushed back some, so just, I don't have it updated, I'm just letting you know.
So we're in here, and how much of this has gotten done?
So we have, then, let's see. We've got the-
So the only things that have been done are the top two things?
No, 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 these are just some notes that I've got, at the time I was making notes.
I like the color. Coordinates. Helps me follow the bouncing ball.
It's all over the place with colors. So we're up to where it says, well, you see the date on January 25th. We were supposed to potentially have some of the information back from the architect. And I've just now gotten some information back from him about changing the detail sheets to reflect those changes. So I need to get that out and make sure that everyone's okay with it. It's roughly, again, I'm not asking for any action here, but since it is going to be a contract amendment, I would like to get some action from council. And since we're going to meet on Tuesday, I'll just bring this up to make sure everyone's okay with the architect proposal. One of the things that I want to mention is, y'all decided to do two different options from the original plan. So we have the original plan that we have the site plans for. We have option one, which was the white facade. Then we have option two, I should say option one is the actual initial one. And then option two would be the white, option three would be the stone. So to change the two detail sheets that reflect the stone and the white, there's detail sheets in the back, it's going to be about $1,500 in that email that I just passed out. So that's just to change that so that when, when the bidder comes back, they-
Why, why, why wasn't, why wasn't that done originally?
Because we didn't know what those two changes were, like the stone and the-
So, so it's not like we did something and forgot to add the two pieces?
No, we only had one choice of a facade. Now we're at three choices, essentially.
Yes, exactly.
Original, that's barn looking, stone, that's firethorn looking, and white this.
Yeah, no, I know, I got that. But what, but what are we, what are we changing? Just the-
Facade.
How can for them to bid, oh, I know that, but for them to bid on?
Yes, because they have to have the specs to effectively bid.
Ah, okay.
It's all material.
But you're asking a contractor to bid on how, you know, how many sheets of stone or whatever.
And we just got to be careful on how, when that contract comes out that we, you know, if we're going to, because one contractor may bid low on the, the one that we want, and then-
Different designs.
And then different designs, they may be higher. I mean, you just don't know.
We just have to word it very carefully, that y'all have the decision to decide stone or not. And then that if you decide-
Regardless of price.
Yes, and if you decide stone, you have to assess each individual contract the same, or proposal the exact same. So we just have to outline that in the RFP process. That, that's key to making sure we do it, you know, appropriately, which is-
The fear being, someone comes in with a low bid and asking why he didn't get it. It's because he may not be the low bid on the one we choose. And we will be choosing it most likely after.
Yeah.
So-
So you just need us to tell you that this $1,500 is okay?
Well, it's not just $1,500, there's more. So there's a couple of different things. If y'all, if you recall, we've got to do the RFP process, which I don't have a problem making the RFP and going through it. It's just since we have all these caveats, these alternates and this language that we have to make sure we get, you know, exactly correct when we talk about assessing each contractor the same and each bid the same. So I would like to have somebody hold my hand through it, which is why I was trying to get the architect to hold my hand through it.
Is he going to?
Well, he's got it billed right here, or not billed, but he's got it in the scope of work with the contracted item that we're proposing. I haven't done anything yet at $95 an hour.
$95?
On the high end, I just said 10 hours for that, so roughly 1,000 bucks, and that's, that's on the high end. And then you see item three, we would have to amend those plans, the detail sheets, and maybe some specification, I say plans, I need to, what, shall I say that word? Let's say we pick the stone at the end. The detail sheet would already have been changed for the facade. But there are some specifications that are towards the back that would have to be changed too that reflect that. Not all, so not all of the plans, but some of the additional detail sheets would need to be changed. He would have to go in and do that if we didn't pick the original plan. So there's going to be a cost of that. I say it's probably going to be minimal, it's probably going to be close to this $1,500. Worst case scenario, double that. So I'm just letting you know. And that's a high, that's a high estimate, but I just want to let you know that's, that's out there. The other thing is, and this is the big one, that I'm still looking into this. When I had the meeting the other day with the architect, he brings out, so we're going to, we've discussed doing a single prime method, which basically we would hire a general contractor. Let's say you're the general contractor, you hire your subs, your electric, your HVAC, your plumbing. The specifications are in the back of, they're in the detail sheets of the plans. So your HVAC, it's in the detail sheets. The architect that we have is scared, not really scared, but is of the opinion that we need to have a separate specifications book for each spec. So like plumbing, for instance, we need to have its own specification book. I didn't, I was weary of that. He said he couldn't tell me for sure because he didn't know for sure. So I called another architect this past week and was getting some information from him, John Fuller. He's got a lot of experience in municipal work. He said he's done over 20 something projects in municipal work. He is, he is of the opinion that we really should have a specification manual for each specification. And I said to him, why would we need that if we're holding the feet to the fire for the general contractor? Because it's his responsibility to have his subs do everything like they're supposed to. And he said, you can go with the plans and the detail and the specs that are in those detail sheets, but he would highly recommend that we had our own specification manual for those. That being said, I've obtained an estimate on that. It's $6,000 to do that. I told John that on the phone, because I had already, I had already done it just to see how much it was going to cost. And he said that was kind of high.
Who did you go for?
It was a spec writer. So we can do it or we can not do it, I mean, it's, if-
Can we, can we piggyback off of like, someone like Wesley Chapel, see what they did and-
They did, they did a spec manual.
Okay, so, I mean-
He actually did theirs for me.
Mostly written, right?
No, it's going to be specific.
It's going to be specific to our project. Here's a-
Talking materials and stuff, that's-
This is, and this is just, I asked him to give me a copy, like a sample of one, and he said he gets comfortable doing that. But like, this is just a table of contents from a spec manual, and it's four pages. So this is like-
For one?
Four pages of specs for-
For like plumbing?
Mm-hmm. But I don't know what this is, we'll see.
This is getting more and more expensive.
So, yeah, this is plumbing.
And if you think about it, we have to buy a piece of land.
I mean, if we have some-
So we have the land for free.
If we have someone that really is experienced, that can help with the process, I don't think we would have a problem. But like John Fuller said, there's a reason you have contracts, they're there for when you need them.
Have you reached, talked to John, our planning board chairperson?
John, John Versich?
Jones.
John Jones.
About this?
Yeah. You should reach out to him and see if he has it, because that's, that's his world, building-
Commercial.
Commercial and doing that. I'm sure he has contacts.
Okay.
And at least he can steer you in the right direction about saying, okay, ask him what he thinks on, because he's on the other side of it.
Okay.
Right, he's the, he's been the contractor or the guy that does that. But, you know, I mean, that's one of the reasons we want him on planning board is because he has the experience to talk to us.
Okay, I'll talk to him. Anyways, I'm not asking-
Where are we, where am I taking?
I'm not asking for any action, I just want to let you know that's kind of where we are, is, we're still working on it. The timeline's going to be pushed back, obviously.
Do you know by how much?
No, I need to, I mean, the main thing is just getting John Urban to go ahead and get started on these detail sheets, and then we can get the RFP out. That's the number one thing, because I feel like we could probably work on the specs later. Well, not later, but at the same time, because we don't actually really need it till we award the contract.
Because we've got on here bids going out the 12th.
Of February or March?
February.
Not happening.
Distribute invitation to bid.
Yeah, because we don't have the detail sheets back. It's going to take John probably a week or two to get these details back.
So we're basically at the beginning of March.
Probably so. I'll, I'll go back and amend the schedule, but, I mean, he just emailed me back last week with those numbers, so.
Yeah, could you amend this and-
Yeah.
Bring it on Tuesday, because I'm assuming we'll talk about this Tuesday.
But that's where I'm at, just wanted to let you know. And hopefully, Robert has some good input into the spec stuff too.
May I ask?
Nope.
So you're done?
Yeah, one, one more thing.
Sure. Because I got a good question, I think.
Just pass this up for folks.
I want to be here another hour.
No, let's go, let's go, let's go.
Robert and I met with the civil engineer a few weeks ago to talk about phasing in a portion, like portions of the project, because in initial assessments for just the grading portion, it was like 400, 500,000 dollars. Now they've estimated the grading with everything you see here, with anticipation of all these future structures. And those future structures being- Village Hall is at this little angle right here.
Okay, okay.
So those future structures have, I don't know exactly what they were, but they have something to do with the farmer's market. Like one of them's a farmer's market, I'm not sure what the other one was.
Beer garden.
Okay. So knowing that that's potentially phase two, what we could do is take these, this site in that plan and amend it, and take that out, and that increases our impervious area. So we would basically reduce the need for the two BMPs that we have, the two retention ponds. So right now we have two retention ponds, if you see the, this area right here? And this area right here, these are both retention ponds.
Which, what's the other one?
Right here.
Down in there, so those are removed?
If we can take out those future structures and instead of making this all impervious, this is all asphalt.
We got to come back with new permits then for the-
Well, what, yes, but it, it's not a big deal. Because what we're trying to do is piggyback off of DOT's erosion control for this area. So anyways, we would come back and basically take this asphalt area and turn it into these impervious paver, or these pervious pavers. So instead of it being asphalt, it would be pavers all along it.
So you have to take, get rid of these structures?
You'd have to get rid of these structures and take these pavers and wrap them around.
So we-
But if you do that, then in the future you decided you want to put them structures there and now you still-
You just put them back, I mean, you just, you'll have to get plans and permits.
But then you still have to spend the, to get the erosion.
I don't think you will, I don't know, I can't answer that, I don't know.
That's one of my questions, you didn't have to add the retention ponds in then?
I don't think so. You only, you, if, if you're having this, this would be pervious at that point. All these paving areas, this paved area would be pervious. And then we're also talking about taking the sidewalk out for now, because that increases your impervious area as well. So if we can find a way to exempt ourselves from the sidewalk-
How do people get to the front door?
The sidewalk right here.
I thought you said you were getting rid of it.
I mean, we could keep, we could keep that one, but the one to the side.
Which one?
You don't have the whole plans right here, but it kind of loops around like this.
But, yeah, so, but, so people are going to park here and then just walk around this way?
I would assume most people would walk, I mean, you're parking here, you could walk around here, like the side.
Yeah, otherwise you're encouraging them to go through the back door if there is one, but-
But, I mean, the main thing is like reducing this right, I mean, taking that off.
So all of this is 400,000 dollars?
It was 400, 500.
Plus the building?
Yes.
I'm telling you, you're going to see a number, you're going to see a number that-
These were just general estimates, like from, just off the cusp. I mean, so they could be, they could come back less or more. But I'm sure the majority of it is these BMPs. I mean, they've got to dig all that out and figure all that stuff out, so. That's just something, just so y'all know, we're working on to see if it's a possibility.
All right.
And that's all I have.
Quick question.
Don't we think we should figure out how much of this stuff is cost, before we can say, oh, let's go build something? Because I mean, if the building's a 1.5 million dollars, this is 400,000.
Well, that 1.5, I think that 400 is better than that.
It is, yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, that's what you said.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you don't know where that is exactly yet. But then, one way of cutting costs is what she's trying to get across, if you wanted to lower that, it's not included.
Does this 400, 500 is included in the 1.5?
Yes.
1.5 is still, 1.5 is still-
Sorry, I may, I may have said no, I don't know.
Because we budgeted 900.
I know.
And that's what we told the community, and now we're at 1.5. I'm guessing, that's all guessing. Real quick, priorities for your new planner?
I've got a bunch. I've got them all written down in this office.
Number four, five?
Well, the first thing is Marvin Gardens, getting Marvin Gardens off the road and settled.
Off the road and in the building?
Yes, trying to get that, that project out the door. And really, you know, his biggest thing is going to be training from the, from the get-go. I mean, he's got to be trained in local government, planning in general. He's got an engineer background, so that's going to be a huge priority for him.
Because you know the planning board's going to come at him, PRG's going to come at him.
Yeah.
You're going to come at him, we're going to come at him. So we just want to make sure that he's got clear direction and priorities coming from you.
Yes.
Not like every other group.
The meetings need to be limited to council members and him, if you know what I mean.
Okay.
I'm just going to say it out loud, just to, you know.
I think it just needs to be like you and until we get like training-
I'd rather get his training and direction from other planners in, or surrounding cities. Find a, find a mentor, whether it's Wesley Chapel or whatever, and, you know.
Yeah, my plan from the first week was to get him into some of our legal municipalities training, because he, we have that, we have that service free. I mean, we, we pay for our membership and we have a lot of good overall trainings with them. So I was going to assign him a bunch of trainings the first week. And I was kind of, kind of hold his hand through the process of some of the land use stuff that he deals with on the day to day. Hook him up with Waxall, Weddington, Wesley Chapel, one of those, and they can help him. And also get him into the American Planning Association and they'll have a training.
Just to be clear, I'm not directing you or we're not saying, or making a motion to do anything. That's my, the opinion of one, that, that's just how I feel about, you know, because these stress, I mean, you can be influenced a lot of times in different ways. But I think, you know, that's, that's a good step. I just was curious, and I'm sure he's going to have a plate full.
Hope he is, yeah.
And being brand new and never doing it before.
Yeah.
That was my biggest concern. And I said, wow, okay, I get it, but then it could work to our benefit, you know.
Yeah. And land use, he's going to have-
I just think you want to establish some kind of thing that, he doesn't, you know, council members don't speak to him without, you know, going through you. I mean, I just, I just want to, you know, you control what is, you know.
Yeah. Because like, like you, you see how much you can be pulled away just by, and it's, this has been going on for years. It's not just now.
Yeah.
It's just been going on for years, so, and, but that's all I have to say about it. But I just was curious to be able to-
Yeah, I've got a big whiteboard in my office with a bunch of stuff written down. He's not going to run out of things to do.
Oh, no. What else do we have? That's it? Okay. There's no action items because we didn't take any action, right?